Do we have any, is that all right, Carla? I just want to make sure I'm following process here.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think we have everyone here. And if you can just announce for the record the time that you called it to order.
Absolutely. So the time is 1:02 on the screen that we called the meeting to order. And do I need to make a motion for that? Or is it okay for me just to call it to order?
That's fine. You can proceed as is.
Thank you. So before us, we need to do our first item for business is roll call. Pam, I think you're the one.
I am the one.
Ready? We'll begin with member Bitzer, present.
I'm here, present.
Member Kate. I see him. Member Duval.
Present.
Thank you. Member Garcia. Member Trujillo Davis.
Present.
And Chair Sueno. Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones. Appreciate you going through your roll call. And the next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. And I just want to open it up to our members and our support staff and legal counsel. If there's any changes or updates to this agenda, I want to open it up to you all. Just looking here, right? So no changes. Counsel, do we want to do kind of add a change on updates to our environmental improvement board membership somewhere out here on the agenda?
You can just, since it's not an action item, if you want to address that now, or and then we can do a vote on the agenda. I think since you've already called that item, perhaps have a vote on approving it. And then just as your own update, you can discuss the membership, the new membership.
Okay, great. So given that, do I have a motion on the agenda?
So moved.
So moved by the motion by member Garcia.
I get, I'll second it.
And the second by member Bitzer. And could we do a roll call vote just so that we have clarity on the meeting minutes?
On the minutes or the agenda, I'm sorry.
I mean, sorry, on the agenda, but just that we make sure we capture it in the meeting minutes.
Okay, okay. To approve the agenda, member Bitzer?
Yes.
Member Kate. Member Duval.
Yes, I.
Member Garcia.
Yes.
Member Trujillo Davis.
Yes.
First.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the approval of the agenda is complete and all in the affirmative.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jones. And I apologize for a little bit of that protocol while we were looking at the draft of the meeting minutes from the last meeting. I know with this virtual media and format, it's hard to see who's making what motion and then all the approvals. So it's just a little bit of formality so that we make sure we get it in the record. So I just want to share that with our members of the board, why we kind of making it a little bit more formal. And I appreciate your patience on going through all of that. And so as we move forward, we have the approval of the January 22nd. Oh, I apologize. I know legal counsel, I think we talked about now is the time where we could announce or talk about the membership.
Yeah, you can go ahead and do that.
Okay. So to our fellow, to our fellow board members, we got a notification earlier this morning, kind of last minute. Our Mr. Volkerding is no longer a member of the Environmental Improvement Board. We got that notification from Melissa Salazar earlier. And I did reach out to Mr. Volkerding and thanked him for his service to the board and to Mexico and our citizens here in New Mexico. I feel a little bad because he's served so many years and has done a great job. It's kind of unceremonial of how, you know, this process. I don't think he's here today, but I just wanted to put on record that I appreciate everything he's done and his guidance and leadership as we were all coming on to the board. And I don't know if anybody else wanted to speak or say anything. I just want to give our board members the opportunity. Say, and if not, I do then have another announcement. We have Mr. William Hunker. We were also notified that he is being appointed by Governor Grisham to our New Mexico Environmental Improvement Board. And so he's on the line today on the teleconference. We were able to get ahold of him, making sure he had the information to call in. And so I just want to welcome you, Mr. Hunker. Appreciate you jumping on with the last minute notice as I know you were handling personal stuff today, so I appreciate it. And I don't know if any of the other board members have any questions or any further discussion. I just wanted to welcome him and then we'll continue to go through this transition process. Carla, is there anything else we need to? Oh, go ahead, member Duval.
Yeah, I was just wondering if Mr. Hunker could just introduce himself and give a little bit of background because, you know, we haven't seen any, anything along those lines. It's not to be challenging of the decision. It's just to introduce, if you could just introduce himself so that we kind of know what, what his story is.
Absolutely, member Duval. So with that said, Mr. Hunker, would you mind sharing a little bit about yourself and anything else you want to share? You're on mute. I can't hear you yet. Oh, yes. The challenge of the teleconference. I know it says you're unmuted, but then maybe it's your microphone. If you go down to the, to the mute button and hit the arrow on the side, it shows your options for a microphone use. Maybe that will help you. Okay. Any other members or legal counsel supports them with other suggestions?
Perhaps we could give Mr. Hunker this opportunity at the next meeting. And in the meantime, Ms. Jones or is it Coral? Coral? I don't want to mispronounce her name, could offer him assistance just before the next meeting to get the audio figured out. The only thing I wanted to add, Mr. Hunker, is since we were, I was only notified this morning of your new appointment. I know there's other steps to become quote unquote official, taking the oath and all that. And because we're not sure of that yet, we're not going to call you as a voting member today to take your vote. We'll certainly make sure that that's all settled before the next meeting so that you can fully participate in addition to the audio issues. And I'm Carla Soria. I'm with the Attorney General's Office and I serve as counsel of the board. So it's very nice to meet you.
Let me try one more time and see if you could hear me now. Okay.
There you go. All right.
There were various choices there. I'm not, I'm not quite used to the WebEx yet. So let me just say, my name's William. I go by Bill. I respond to either one. I live in Placitas. I've been here about three years. I worked 42 years for the Environmental Protection Agency in the Dallas office. So I worked a lot with the state agencies in New Mexico among with, along with four other states and, and worked in just about all of the environmental program areas in, in, in my experience. I have been a registered professional engineer in Texas. I'm currently in inactive status and probably won't activate that anytime unless I really need it. But really looking, looking forward to working with all of you and getting to know you. I hope one of these days we get to meet face to face. I just had my first COVID shot right before the meeting. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll, we'll be able to do face to face meetings. And if you all have any other questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them at this point, but I'll be getting up to speed in the coming weeks, I'm sure. So I'm glad to be with you and look forward to getting to know all of you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hunker. Appreciate that introduction. And I don't know if any other members have any other statements or questions. As, as our legal counsel said, we just got all this last minute. So we apologize for, if there's this last minute notice, as you mentioned, member Duval. So but we'll navigate it all together and figure out how we, we accomplish this transition. But I do want to leave it open if anybody else had anything else to say.
Well, you've got instruments hanging in the background, Bill, so that's a good sign.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to add, William Ruckelhaus was my uncle. So I got a soft spot for the EPA. So I'm glad to have you on board.
Thank you. I never, I never got to meet Mr. Ruckel's house, but I sure appreciate it, his leadership.
Yes, sir. I'm guessing you, you got out of New Mexico or you're glad you got out of Texas.
Yeah, I've got a lot of friends. Got a lot of friends who have been through a lot of agony with this winter weather. So happy, happy things have been going well here.
Thank you all. And again, Mr. Hunker, welcome. And we look forward to your participation and your insight, your expertise as part of our board. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much. So with that said, I think the next item on our agenda is approval of the January 22nd, 2020, 2021 minutes. Are there any changes or revisions that any of our members have? Just raise your hand. And do you have any changes?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Thank you so much, member Bitzer. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, second.
Thank you, member Duval, for your second. Many discussions or any, anything else? If not, Ms. Jones, would you mind doing a vote?
Yes, sure will. To approve the, for the approval of the minutes, member Bitzer.
Aye, yes.
Member Kate.
Yes.
Member Duval.
Yes.
Member Garcia.
Yes.
Peter Davis.
Yes.
Chair Sueno.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I appreciate that. And so we'll go on to our next item on the agenda. And that would be, I'm going to back up here. That would be EIB 21-05, petition for adoption of state implementation plan certification and request for hearing. So at this time, Mr. Knight, NMD Council, I believe is, is on the line. Sorry, I'm looking here, making sure he's here. Okay.
Madam Chair, good afternoon. This is Andrew Knight. I'm counsel for New Mexico Environment Department, Air Quality Bureau. With me today are several members of the Air Quality Bureau. And we are here to present our petition requesting a hearing for our state implementation plan certification.
Thank you so much, Mr. Knight. And the floor is turned over to you, so go ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The EPA requires that we have a state implementation plan for ozone transport. This is under the good neighbor provision of our state implementation plan. And the purpose of this certification is to certify that New Mexico has sufficient infrastructure in place to assure that we are not contributing to ozone exceedances through the cross-border transport of ozone. And we developed the SIP certification for ozone transport. That is attachment one to our petition. And we are submitting that certification to the board for its consideration and approval. And now normally, a public hearing would not be required for a SIP certification because by this certification, we are, we are maintaining the current state implementation plan for ozone transport, and we are not proposing any changes. So this would not qualify as a regulatory change under the procedural rules such that a hearing would be required. However, we did, we received a hearing request from Wild Earth Guardians, and I see that they're here with us today. And so, you know, therefore, because of that hearing request, we are coming to you, the board, to request a hearing at the regular May 2021 EIB meeting. And we estimate that a hearing on this matter would require approximately four hours, although we're certainly open to hearing from the Wild Earth Guardians representative as to if they have a different take on that. And I'm just, almost an aside, I guess I would, the department would recommend that one of the EIB board members serve as the hearing officer in this case, because I know that our department hearing officer is, has a really, really heavy schedule over the next few months. And we wouldn't want his lack of availability to delay a hearing on this matter. We are under some degree of time constraint because we have a deadline to submit the approved certification to the EPA. And that's, you know, why we wouldn't want any unnecessary delay in holding this hearing. With that, we were happy to answer any questions that the board members may have. And again, I know we may want to hear from, from Mr. Nichols with Wild Earth Guardians, if he has anything that he'd like to add. And, you know, we, we stand for questions and I think the appropriate member of the Air Quality Bureau, we can maybe decide among ourselves who's most appropriate to answer any given question.
Thank you, Mr. Knight, for your, your presentation and, and the information that you shared with the board. Before I ask my questions, I just want to open it up to my fellow board members. Do you have any questions from Mr. Knight? And before you, you do share some of your questions, I just wanted to mention, we did receive the notification from Wild Earth Guardians, from Mr. Nichols, that they wanted to provide some comments on this, on this agenda item. And we will do that after we finish with Mr. Knight and any questions that we have for Mr. Knight and NMD. So with that, I just want to open up to the board members, if you have any questions regarding what Mr. Knight shared or on this agenda item.
Mr. Knight, Madam Chair, if I may just ask a clarifying question to Mr. Knight, just for the board's, for the board's background, is it, it's correct that you mentioned that a hearing ordinarily wouldn't be possible, but the authority for the board's hearing this matter is federal regulation? Is that, is that accurate to state, Mr. Knight?
Um, let's see. I think, you know, I think the, the full answer is, is it's a combination of federal and state. The state's Air Quality Control Act allows for public hearing. And, you know, it's really a, it's not a simple answer, unfortunately. It's but a combination of state law, federal law, regulation, and I believe court precedent kind of all combined to, to, you know, both give the authority for hearing and make a hearing necessary under the circumstances.
Does that address your question, legal counsel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Knight.
Thank you for that question. If, if nobody else has any questions, I do have a couple for you, Mr. Knight, if I may. I just want, just I just want to be clear. You're requesting that one of our board members serve as the hearing officer, not to delay the hearing if we agree to go forth with the hearing, because that's related to a deadline. Could you share with us what that deadline is?
For that, Madam Chair, I'd like to defer to Michael Baca, who is here with us today. He is with the Air Quality Bureau and he can talk more specifically about the, maybe the, you know, just briefly talk about the process for submitting this to EPA and the deadlines that are, that apply to that.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Thank you. And the floor is open to you, Mr. Baca.
Madam Chair, members of the board. So an infrastructure shift is generally due to EPA three years after promulgation of a national ambient air quality standard. So this, this submittal was due in October of 2018. Under, under the advice of EPA Region Six, we were waiting for them to produce some information, some modeling results and some guidance on how to prepare this portion of the infrastructure SIP. And we were encouraged to not submit this SIP at that time. So we, we worked with EPA for almost a year and a half to develop this SIP after that deadline, after 2018. And we completed that in 2019. During the public comment period, we did receive a comment to hold a hearing. And so we, you know, we were preparing to do, to request a hearing at that time. What also had happened is EPA received notice that they were going to be sued for not picking, for us not submitting our SIP on time. And so what they did was issue what's called a finding of failure to submit, which starts a federal implementation clock. So they give us two years from when they issued that, which was December of 2019, in order to submit our own SIP to EPA and have them approve it before they will issue us a federal implementation plan for this. So I know that wasn't the clearest answer, but hopefully that, you know, the, the short answer is that the deadline is December of 2021. The original deadline was October of 2018.
Thank you for that, Mr. Baca. Appreciate that. And I know nothing is ever sure to the point, but that, that helps me. Let's see. And I think, so in terms of the hearing estimation of four hours, is, is that based upon what kind of feedback you've gotten from stakeholders? Or are you thinking that it might go longer?
Madam Chair, members of the board, that is based on our estimation of the time to present our case and allow an equal amount of time for the other party to present their case and have the board ask questions and deliberate and reach a decision. The fact that there will only be two parties simplifies it from some other rulemaking matters and where there are multiple parties. And the fact that, you know, we are not proposing to change anything in our existing SIP, but rather just have the board review and approve our certification to basically, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Baca, but to, you know, our, our position is that the SIP that, that we previously developed continues to be adequate to meet the requirements. So, you know, since we're not asking for a new SIP or a different SIP than the one we already have, we think that that simplifies any hearing on this to the point where we believe we can get it done in four hours.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. And board members, do we have any other questions for Mr. Knight or Mr. Baca? Yes, member Trujillo Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just curious, in the event that you had to make a change to the current plan, how much time would that take?
Madam Chair, member Trujillo Davis, I would say, it would be hard to say, it would depend on the, the scope of the change that was required and whether it would require additional modeling, air, air dispersion modeling or pollutant modeling for that change. I would say that, you know, depending on the scope, it, it could require substantial time on the order of months to make any substantial change to this plan. Again, I would, I would refer to the Air Quality Bureau staff for the technical aspects of that, but without knowing the, you know, the scope or the type of change that was involved, it's, it's, would be hard to say.
Thank you for that. And I apologize for the very broad question. I just wanted to, I realized we're on a tight timeline. If your submittal should be by December 2021, and so just factoring in hearing, I was just trying to get an idea of what the timelines would look like. So thank you for answering that.
Certainly.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate that. Any other members have any other questions? If not. If not, I think we can.
Madam Chair, if I, I just interject a question. Just back it up and ask question, Mr. Knight. Are you telling us that the state is saying it's advisable or is it required to have the hearing? Advisable or required?
Madam Chair and member Kate, it is it is my, my interpretation of legal precedent and the statutes and relevant statutes and regulations that if the board were to deny a hearing on this matter and go forward with approving our certification, that there is a good probability that such a result would be vulnerable to a challenge by the hearing requester or other parties. And there's a high probability that the board's action could be reversed by a court if we were not to allow hearing on this matter. So it is, you know, while it is not, to me, it is not absolutely, you know, black letter law that a hearing must be held. I would say that it would be very risky not to hold a hearing, both from, for the department and for the board.
Thank you for that answer, Mr. Knight. On my screen, member Kate's video went out. Member Kate, do you have any follow-up questions? Let's see, okay. So thank you again, Mr. Knight and Mr. Baca and NMD for your presentation and answering our board's questions. I think at this time, I'd like to acknowledge, I think initially we were thinking Mr. Nichols, but I think we got last minute notice. I don't know how to say your name, Matt Nikhil? Okay. Great, great. So at this time, would it be appropriate, our legal counsel, to give Mr. Nikhil a few minutes to address the board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Mr. Nikhil, you're welcome to share your comments to the board and regarding agenda item number four. Thank you.
And actually, Madam Chair and members of the board, I was just going to kick things off here real quick. My, Jeremy Poles, I am the Climate and Energy Program Director for Wild Earth Guardians. And we submitted, I submitted on behalf of Wild Earth Guardians the original hearing request in addition to substantive comments on the proposed SIP certification. I'm going to hand it off to my staffer, Matt Nikhil, to provide some comments to y'all. And then I'm going to offer some additional comment on any potential hearing format and timing. We do have some thoughts on that. We weren't consulted in advance in terms of how a hearing would be structured or how the timing would be set. And we would appreciate the opportunity to provide feedback to that end. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Matt.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nichols. And I will acknowledge that you'll be coming back on with Mr. Nikhil when Mr. Nikhil's done with his presentation. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name's Matt Nikhil. I'm a climate energy program attorney with Wild Earth Guardians. And thank you for the opportunity to comment. As you know, it's important to carefully consider any issue that has to do with ozone, because there's extensive scientific evidence showing ozone is associated with many public health concerns, including increases to respiratory infection, asthma attacks, premature death. And as ozone degrades public health, it correspondingly increases the cost to local economies and family budgets through more doctor visits, emergency room visits, hospital admissions. So ozone is both a significant public health concern and an economic concern. And so I just wanted to begin with that context, because as we get into the complexity of New Mexico's responsibilities under the Clean Air Act, it can be easy to forget or overlook why what we're doing here is so important to people. And with that, we support, we would like to have a hearing, but we would also like the board to consider not necessarily granting that hearing today and allowing the department to take the SIP certification back to conduct more analysis as it's necessary to meet the standards and obligations set forth in the Clean Air Act. The department's SIP certification as it is can't pass EPA scrutiny if it were submitted, because it doesn't ensure that ozone and ozone-forming emissions originating in New Mexico will not contribute significantly to ozone violations to our downwind neighbors. The certification also doesn't ensure that ozone and ozone-forming emissions originating in New Mexico will not interfere with our downwind neighbors' efforts to prevent ozone violations either. And the certification doesn't ensure these legal obligations are met, because it relied on air quality conditions and data from 2011, which don't accurately reflect how emissions and air quality in New Mexico and in the West have significantly changed since then. So, for example, in New Mexico's San Juan and Permian Basins, emissions of VOCs and NOx ozone precursors and air quality have changed rapidly since 2011. And as you know, oil and gas production in these regions has been skyrocketing and in just the past three years, and air quality has degraded. All three air quality monitors in southeast New Mexico are now in violation of the National Ambient Air Quality Standards for ozone. And in drafting the SIP certification, the department relied entirely on 2011 emissions data and EPA's modeling of that data. And it ignored or withheld analysis of the recent changes in emissions and air quality. And although EPA provided memorandums, modeling to assist states, EPA specifically cautioned states from viewing these materials as conclusive for purposes of determining each state's SIP obligations. EPA, in fact, encouraged states to provide supplemental information as necessary to ensure that states correctly identified and addressed their good neighbor's SIP obligations. But the department's SIP certification doesn't do, didn't do that. The SIP certification needs to supplement EPA's memos and models by addressing recent emissions and air quality data, but also by addressing recent cuts to EPA pollution control laws. Just this last year in August 2020, the EPA under the last federal administration rescinded significant portions of the new source performance standards for the oil and gas industry. But EPA's modeling, on which the department's certification is based, assumed that those NSPS pollution controls would be implemented and enforced. But as of this time, that won't be the case. And so without these pollution controls, future emissions are expected to be much greater than what the department forecasted and analyzed in its certification. So right now, we see the certification is seriously deficient and requiring supplemental information and analysis. Otherwise, submitting it as is would risk EPA intervention for not properly addressing New Mexico's good neighbor's SIP obligations. And so I want to be clear that, you know, we definitely would support a hearing, but we think maybe the more proper course of action is for the board to delay that hearing and allow the department to incorporate recent emission and air quality data and to conduct the analysis that's necessary to meet its Clean Air Act obligations. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So, you know, just to reiterate, we do support a hearing. We requested it. We absolutely want to participate in the hearing, but want to do so on a proposal that, that is pretty close to, to fit in the bill here, that gets us to a point where we can be sure that we're engaging on a proposal that truly passes muster in terms of making a submission to the EPA. So with that, I just want to remark, in terms of any hearing structure, I just want to point out, one, there won't just be, there may not just be two parties to the rulemaking. Once the notice of hearing is published, then anybody can submit a notice of intent to present technical testimony and participate as a formal party to the hearing. So I don't want us to presume, or I hope the board doesn't presume that it will just be two parties. There absolutely could be additional parties in the mix. We do feel that if the proposal as it is, is put to a hearing, we do feel that more than four hours will be needed for the hearing itself. Not, we're not sure about how much time may be needed for deliberation, but absolutely, we feel that at least six to, probably more like six hours would be needed for the hearing. We do expect to bring forward experts. We do expect to bring forward additional information and to engage robustly in this hearing process. So we urge the board to consider that as this hearing is scheduled. And then we also really urge the board to account for the fact that there is likely to be significant public interest in this hearing and therefore lots of public comment very likely during a hearing and to be sure that the board is accommodating that public engagement as well. So I just want to flag those issues and present that perspective for consideration to the board. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols and Mr. Nikhil. Appreciate your comments and the information that you brought forward. Do any of the members of the board have any questions or comments regarding Wild Earth Guardians discussion?
I'd like to, I'd like to hear from the state if the state has anything to say about the proposal that they take this intervening time and, and update with more recent data.
Madam Chair, member Bitzer and members, we respectfully disagree with the assertions made by Wild Earth Guardians. And we've spent quite a bit of time and effort over the past year and more developing the SIP certification. We have consulted with EPA extensively during the process. And we are confident that the SIP certification is ready to go and will meet EPA requirements and will be approved by EPA once we submit it. So, you know, we urge the board not to delay a hearing on this matter and to go forward. And we're, you know, perfectly willing and happy to make our presentation to the board at the hearing and demonstrate the adequacy of our SIP certification.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Member Bitzer, do you have any follow-up questions? Member Deval?
This is probably something that would be more germane during a formal hearing process, but it's, it's really hard to evaluate questions about modeling veracity unless we have an opportunity to look at that. I'm not, I'm not challenging Mr. Nikhil about that at all. I'm actually very curious about, you know, both to Mr. Knight and Mr. Nikhil's contentions seem to be going back and forth. Is this publicly open source information that interested party with the ability to properly evaluate modeling experiments could take a look at? Is this something that we have at our disposal? I mean, is this publicly available information? And if so, how do we access this?
Yeah, Madam Chair, member Deval, I'll let Mr. Baca see if he can address that question.
Thank you. Mr. Baca?
Thank you, Madam Chair, member Deval, and the rest of the EIB members. Absolutely, this modeling information is open source. It is conducted by the Environmental Protection Agency on a national scale. And it is, all of the information is available on the website. You know, they do this modeling on a national scale for a number of reasons. One is to, in their review of the ozone standards, and two is for the implementation of those standards. So one of the big rules that we hear about back east is the cross-state air pollution rule. And the modeling that they conduct for the interstate transport SIPs that we're doing supports both those transport SIPs in the West and the cross-state air pollution rule in the East. So there's a number of websites, you know, there's an EPA website and there's a number of links to all the information that you can dig into as far as the platform of the modeling, the emissions that are being used. You know, all the sensitivities that they've, that they've run. And, you know, there's a wealth of information on the modeling that is available to anyone. I'd like to point out that they have done updated modeling to this, and it's even showing that we are contributing less to our neighbors and downwind states. So we definitely plan on bringing this information to the hearing. And I encourage Wild Earth Guardians to, you know, look at the modeling or share with the department some of their modeling that they may have done on a national scale that might also help us to do this evaluation. Because we are right now are relying on the EPA's modeling in our analysis. And we're relying on that cross-state air pollution rule framework to do this analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Baca.
Thank you, that, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Baca. Thank you. I'll, I kind of just want to get pointed in the right direction since you might have worked before. Thank you.
Thank you, member Deval. And member Trujillo Davis?
Vice Chair?
Thank you. So just for clarification, this modeling is based on contributions to neighboring states in non-attainment areas? If, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to understand this, but does that mean that in non-attainment areas that are bordering, bordering the state of New Mexico?
And again, I'll, Madam Chair and member Trujillo Davis, I'll refer to Mr. Baca for this question.
Thank you. Mr. Baca?
Not necessarily bordering, but due to the proximity, they generally are the states that are bordering New Mexico. And the monitors do not have to be in non-attainment, but the modeling has to show that they would be in non-attainment to be considered part of the transport. So the whole part of the, of the transport SIP is that we're not significantly contributing to non-attainment or interfering with maintenance of the standard. And so that we're not causing non-attainment in another downwind state is basically what, what we're trying to evaluate. And the monitor that we are linked to, I'm sorry, the two monitors that we were linked to in this modeling are in the Denver metro area. And so they have a history of their issues dating back to, you know, 15, 20 years.
Thank you, Mr. Baca, and I hope I'm not getting off in the weeds there on that. I just want to make sure we're fully, I was fully understanding the issue. So thank you for answering that.
Thank you, member Trujillo Davis. Does any other members have any other questions? No? Okay, great. I don't have any follow-up questions. I think our fellow, my fellow members asked the questions that I had. Is there anything else I think that we're missing? Just double checking with our members one more time. I, so how I understand, just to kind of summarize, make sure I'm, I'm on the page here. We're looking still for a hearing. I understand Wild Earth Guardian representatives wanted maybe some additional work before a hearing. But the, on the table right now, the request is that we have a hearing May 2021. And there is probably going to be some discussion about the data and that will come up during the hearing. And I understand Wild Earth Guardians brought up, but also concerns that And I understand while Earth Guardians brought up, that also concerns that it might be longer than four hours in, in terms of the hearing. And I don't know, I just want to open it up to the, the board members. If you have any other questions regarding the logistics of that, or if I, if I misunderstood, I'm looking for your all support and if I'm missing anything, but I think that's what I understood. Yes, Member Bitzer?
I'll pull myself out there and suggest that we need to, to allot more than four hours in the interest, since it sounds, Council Knight suggested that, that we'd be in violation if we didn't have this hearing, that we go ahead and make it a robust one for everyone that, that wants to weigh in. If the community's going to be short circuited, then we might as well not have a hearing. So I'm going to suggest we go with, with their suggestion that we have at least a six hour hearing.
Thank you, Member Bitzer. Any other comments? Yes, Member Garcia?
Yes. So do we, at this time, I, I could go forward with a motion to hold the hearing and shall I propose a date in May? I guess it's the last Friday in May is is what we normally do. I know that gets to be around memorial time. That would be the 28th, May 28th. So I don't know if we want to move it up to the 41st. But I would, I would make a motion to hold the hearing and perhaps even allow eight hours and start the hearing at nine instead of one.
Thank you. So we have a motion for a hearing on May 28th to start it at nine AM for, for this hearing. Do I have a second? Yes, Member Bitzer?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Second by Member Bitzer. So is there any discussion before we vote? If not, I'm looking across the board here. If not, then we have a motion in a second. Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call or a vote call here and go down on members?
Yes, I will. Beginning with Member Bitzer.
Yes, yes.
Member Cates?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Duval?
Yes.
Got it. Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jones. I appreciate that. And so it looks like we have a hearing scheduled. There's one more item, I think, on my list here that we've got to determine is regarding the hearing officer. Is that correct? Legal counsel?
Yes, Madam Chair, if we want to consider that. I think Ms. Jones had something to add to that regarding the count, the department's in-house hearing officer, if you want, if you just want to share that with the board, Pam?
Yes, thank you. I, I know that our in-house hearing officer is, is very heavily booked through midsummer. So if we're considering, and it looks like we are, a hearing in May, we would probably need to look at a board member. If we wanted to schedule something farther out, then I believe he's got time on his schedule at this point. That's all I needed to say.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. So I just want to open it up to the board. Is there any discussion about the hearing officer or, or even nominations for the hearing officer? Thank you, Member Bitzer?
Chair, I'll offer to be, be the hearing officer. I've, I've run these things before, so when I was in state government, so I know how to run a meeting. Contribute that.
Thank you, Member Bitzer. Appreciate you stepping forward with your experience. Is there any other comments or questions from, from any other members? Looking around here. No? All right, so I, I I'm thinking we need a motion for that. Is that correct, legal counsel?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a motion regarding Member Bitzer being the hearing officer from our members? Motion by Member Duval?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a second by Member Cates, as I heard first. And then, so we have a motion in a second. Ms. Jones, would you be so kind to do a vote, vote call on that?
Certainly, the motion on Member Bitzer standing as hearing officer. We'll begin with Member Bitzer.
Counsel, do I need to recuse myself on this?
No, you don't. You can go.
I'll vote yes.
Member Cates?
Yes.
Member Duval?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Madam Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, for doing that. All right, so we have a hearing in May 28th. Member Bitzer will be our hearing officer and we are scheduled to start at nine AM. And thank you so much again for Mr. Knight, Mr. Baca, Mr. Nichols and Mr. Nikhil for sharing your comments and we will just proceed on, on this issue. And I'm sure some of the issues that you brought up on all sides will come up. And so we will do our best to respectfully address and navigate the issues and make sure that we have enough just adequate public participation, your participation. And so we'll do our best as we move forward on this issue. And thank you again.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. All right, so the next item on our agenda, real quick, legal counsel, I just want to make sure that we resolved everything regarding that hearing that we needed to.
With Pam and also to make sure we get the notices out for that, but if everyone could just make themselves available all day, day. One, one matter I did want to address or detail is that support has experienced, sometimes there's enough to deliberate after, quickly after the hearing. So I'll make sure that that's in the notice to give before the option, but it could be that the hearing takes the full eight hours and we would have to reserve deliberation for another date. But I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And yeah, that's definitely something we'll need to take into consideration. And if you can just give us that flexibility, that would be great in the, in the notice. Great. So with that, I think we're off to our second agenda item, which is discussion about the next meeting on March 26, 2021. Pam or, I mean, Ms. Jones or legal counsel, do we have anything up on the agenda coming up that you're aware of?
Not at this point, Madam Chair.
Okay, but we'll still schedule it just in case something does come up in the meantime. So we're looking, is that okay with our fellow board members? That date? Great. And see, all the head nods, that's great, great news. So we'll schedule that March 26, 2021. Do we need a motion for that? I can't recall.
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda, if, just before we get there, I just want to leave it open. Is there any other discussion items that our board members want to bring up? Board member Garcia?
Yes, I think our counsel was going to let us know about an appeal. Did you?
Oh, there you go.
Yes, if I could briefly, just as a point of information for the board, I wanted to let you know that last Friday, Wild Earth Guardians did appeal the board's decision in the previous petition you all considered concerning the permitting actions for three bear XTO spur and one other that I'm forgetting right now. But that has been appealed as a matter of right to the Court of Appeals. So it's pending there now. There's nothing that you all have to do to address that right now, that Wild Earth Guardians eventually will be filing, will, is required to file a more detailed filing so that I know and you all will know what the specific issues on appeal are. But I did just want to let you know that that has happened.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And thank you, Member Garcia. I had a note and I even forgot. So appreciate that reminder. Great. So I think we're here towards the end of our agenda to the adjournment, our item number six. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Looks like Member Cates moves to.
Can I interject a quick question here? I'm on a lot of Zoom calls. I don't have any technical problems with those typically. And on this setup, Cisco WebEx, it keeps crashing on me. Is that just me? Is anybody, are we stuck with this? What's going on? Well, it's a question probably for staff. Is it just something that we're, that we've got to, we have to stick with?
Absolutely not. We can, we can move this to a Zoom meeting. In fact, I believe our, our WebEx license is going to expire in November and then we'll have to. So you guys just let me know how to schedule it and I can put it on either platform.
So I noticed, Carla, you were shaking your head. So is this a, is this a chronic thing?
I, I have found for a number of clients that use WebEx specifically for meetings and hearings that WebEx tends to be one of the glitchier platforms. My recommendation would be if you're having particular trouble with your bandwidth, things cutting out to keep your video off, at least while you're not texting. I do, WebEx still allows a call in option too. That's the other option, but I, I just wanted to echo your thoughts. It's just not a flawless program to be using. So if, if staff is agreeable and the board desires it to be on another platform, that there's certainly no issue with that.
Thank you, Member Cates, for bringing that up. Is there any other preferences for our board members? No? All right.
I mean, I, 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 I teach via Zoom. I've used this WebEx and also Microsoft Teams. I've, I've used, I think it really I don't know that there's inherently a better or worse platform. I think it really depends on your on your, on your internet access. So that's just been my experience.
Yeah. Mine's pretty good here. I just wonder if it's a, and I use Macs. And maybe there's an interface question there. I'm not sure. Does anybody else use a Mac? Raise your hand.
I'm on a Mac right now, so.
Oh, so that's, okay. Well.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you.
Well, would it be possible, Ms. Jones, if we could try a Zoom and see what that looks like in the next meeting?
Yes, I'll schedule the March 26th meeting on the Zoom platform. See how we like it.
You can still record on Zoom, right? That's, that's great.
Great. Thank you for bringing that up, Member Cates. All right. Well, with that said, do we have a motion to adjourn? Member Garcia moves to adjourn. Do you have a second?
I get it.
Member Bitzer, second? Thank you. All right, let's go through the roll call again or vote call.
Roll call to adjourn. Member Bitzer?
Yes, yes.
Member Cates?
Yes.
Member Duval?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
And Chair Sweeney? Motion passes unanimously, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jones, and thank you all for attending and we'll look forward to seeing you next month. And thank you so, so much and have a safe weekend.